What's that? I'm here. What's that?
Or this group is.
You guys on?
Yeah, it's right in the recording.
So you don't want us to say?
Please don't.
By the way.
They retired at seventeen, so. They're in Big Apple. Haven't been invited to that. Says one of them.
Yeah, I could pull this up and watch your stuff on there. Just when I do the math, the last question. We used to be down with Javie if we were on. That's true.
Hopefully they're good.
You know?
That's good.
Well, good, welcome. It's good to see you. And did you draw the shortstop? Or was it?
Steve asked us if he came to ask this question. He's a dad in high school. I was like, oh, that's not much. I used, my dad was also working years, and I loved watching them. And then my father-in-law.
Guess what? You could watch them every single time. Every, you don't even have to leave your own.
My father-in-law is on Star Valley first. So he's like, I need to try to go over to Mountain. And I was like, oh, with you, I can enjoy watching them, so.
Well, we appreciate you. I'm forward to having you. Are you, are you certain? Yeah.
Test one, two. One, two. Testing one, two.
Oh, that's got a red light on it. Do you have a red light on it? Oh, you know what? Hold it down one more time. I think it's me doing.
Just, it's not picking up as well. So I'm going to swap. Now, let's label this one as pulled down. Let's label this one as pulled down.
Oh, thank you. I looked at it, but I didn't see why not. Yeah, she's so happy. Did you guys get it now?
I was. This isn't a question that shouldn't be going. Oh, it was going. About twenty minutes later, I said, it's not going.
I'm prepared to be damned.
I understand. Could you just take care of it?
Right.
Because Dad wasn't in clean. I was more than uncomfortable. I just heard about Don Bodine. I just barely heard about Don Bodine. Like on.
Yeah. Last, last night or?
Last night.
Last night, yeah. What? What happened? He passed away?
No, I know. What? A heart attack?
He had been sick.
Oh, okay. He lost a lot of weight, but I didn't know. Don Bodine passed away last night. And Jenny's mom passed away this morning.
Yeah. You're going to help me?
Yeah. He had a, he's out in California.
Who's, who's that?
Mark.
There's all of them.
Oh, yeah, worries.
Mark is lead boy, right? That's Lee's son. Yeah, he's got four, he's got four sisters. They're still late sometimes. You're all old.
If I can get that thing to work today.
It is six oh four. Want to welcome everybody tonight and need to call the school board into session. Will y'all please join me for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Time schedules. Alrighty. I'm. We are moving forward to election time. We need to elect a new chair, vice chair, treasurer, and clerk.
Open meeting. Open meeting.
Okay, I called to order. Oh, I was told that I didn't need to motion.
No, you doesn't.
He doesn't. He can call it to order and that's all.
You don't have to have a motion.
I, I can, if you would like me to.
We always have.
I know, that's.
I changed.
I know, he's, he's been the little devil on my ears.
I know he's the Robert Truitt of order.
I know he is the, I know he's the, he's the guy.
According to Robert Truitt, the chairman can call it to order and end it.
And I know he can end it, because I brought that up one time and it was detailed.
Oh, okay.
You don't need to vote the adjourned.
Okay, anyway, we are in session.
Okay, we are.
We are in session.
I'll just let you guys do your work.
Okay, so we need to elect a new chair, a vice chair, a treasurer, and a clerk for the next coming year of the 2026 school year. So.
I nominate Dan to do all those things.
Okay.
Every single one of them.
Every single one of them.
Surely you just.
Which one are you going to do first?
We're going to start with the chair.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate David Peterson for next year's chairman of the board.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any other nominations?
What's that look on your face, Dave? Is that disgust? Are you hoping for one?
No, I'm, I'm good. I appreciate the vote of confidence, but all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. I need a motion or I need a nominee for the vice chair.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we nominate Jenny.
Okay. So I have a motion to nominate Jenny Welling as the vice chair. Do I have a second?
Second, that motion.
I have a second. Any other nominees?
I would recommend this young lady to my left.
Okay.
To be the vice chair as well.
Okay, so Jessica Arch. Do I have a second?
Second, that.
I have a second. Okay, we need to go to a vote. So we need to have a vote. Those in favor of.
Wait, 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 wait. It's closed.
It's closed vote.
I've got some papers for you. Yes.
You don't want to hang that over people's heads?
Well, you can do whatever you want. You're the chairman. How we've done in the past.
Just then.
When there's more than one, huh?
Yeah.
Let's, let's get out in the open, shall we?
Yeah. This isn't even getting formal.
Right. Well, that's sharing for you.
I'll have to borrow your pen.
Take care of this. I don't know whose pens these are, Dan. We're using.
Same thing I can use in work either.
Pens aren't working?
There we go. Well, I'm glad you showed up, Brian. We could have been even. You've always been the odd one out.
That's, that's me.
Chairman, Chairman Peterson, Jenny Welling.
Jenny Welling. Okay. All right. So Jenny Welling has been nominated and has been elected to be the vice chair moving forward 2026. We need a motion for the treasurer. I mean, not a motion, but need a nominee for the treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Dan Wheeler. Is that what he's presenting here?
No, the clerk.
Oh, excuse me. Caleb is.
Caleb is the treasurer.
Caleb.
So you nominate Caleb? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, do I have another name? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so you're the man. I need a name for the clerk of the chair, of the board.
I nominate Dan Wheeler.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Do we have any other nominees? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wheeler, you are continuing to be the clerk for 2026. So we got all those? Nothing changed for the year?
We like to make it easier here.
Okay.
Don't have to go to the bank, make all those changes.
All right, I need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda for December. What the hell is today?
Ninth.
Ninth. Two thousand twenty-five.
Whatever day you want. Been one of those days. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda items, minutes, and the payment of bills.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda items at this time.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I recuse myself from check one thirty-one ninety-two.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Consent agenda items have been approved. Okay, well, we now move on to recognitions.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, I'd invite Principal Summer Moore to come forward and also Amanda Linford to come forward. I about said Amanda Morris. Sorry.
It's all right.
Old habits. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this is one of the biggest opportunities, I think, and exciting moments in my career to be able to recognize the fabulous Mrs. Linford. I do know that my brother and sister would be jealous of this opportunity as she taught them. I did not get that opportunity. And I am not physically inclined in any way. I will tell you that. So I also had the privilege of being able to write a letter of recommendation for Mrs. Linford for the Wyoming Music Educators Association Board. And so I thought it was very fitting tonight to read this to you and show all of, a smidgen, I should say, of the tremendous, amazing, incredible work that she has done and dedicated her life to as a music teacher at North Elementary. So it is with profound enthusiasm that I recommend Mrs. Amanda Linford for the Wyoming Music Educator Association Teacher of the Year Award. I really feel like they missed out because we have the best. So having already been recognized as the Southwest Wyoming Music Educator Association Music Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Linford's exceptional contributions to music education make her an outstanding candidate for this prestigious statewide honor. As a dedicated music educator at North Evanston Elementary for an impressive thirty-eight years, Mrs. Linford has created a remarkable legacy that spans four generations of students. Throughout her career, she has consistently demonstrated an unwavering commitment to musical excellence while touching the lives of approximately three hundred students annually. That's incredible. Mrs. Linford's pedagogical expertise is evident in her meticulous approach to curriculum development and instruction. She has continually refined her teaching methodology through ongoing professional development, ensuring that students from kindergarten through fifth grade receive progressive, high-quality music education that builds skills sequentially, year after year. Her impact extends beyond her classroom through her generous mentorship. Mrs. Linford has successfully guided seven student teachers through their practicum experiences and has mentored over eight beginning teachers during their crucial first three years in the district. Her willingness to share her extensive knowledge helps ensure that excellent music education will continue here in our district well into the future. One of Mrs. Linford's most remarkable achievements has been orchestrating over two hundred and twenty-two, I'll repeat that again, two hundred and twenty-two grade-level musical performances throughout her career. Each production showcases students' musical abilities, dancing skills, and public speaking talents at an exceptionally high level. What truly sets these performances apart is Mrs. Linford's special ability to identify and encourage students who might not typically seek the spotlight, giving them opportunities to shine through solo performances that build their confidence and self-esteem. The school's Veterans Day musical performance and breakfast has become a cherished community tradition in Evanston, providing a meaningful tribute that community members eagerly anticipate each year, and most of our veterans, as well as our staff, are moved to tears every year. This event exemplifies Mrs. Linford's talent for using music to create powerful connections beyond just our school walls. Additionally, Mrs. Linford masterfully integrates musical instruction with classroom content, from friendship themes to historical contexts, creating cross-curricular learning experiences that enhance student engagement and deepen understanding. Mrs. Amanda Linford represents the very best of music education in Wyoming and, I believe, our nation. Her decades of excellence, innovation, teaching approaches, and profound impact on students, fellow educators, and the broader school community make her exceptionally deserving of the consideration for the Wyoming Music Educator Association Teacher of the Year. And so with that, I present Amanda Linford.
Am I supposed to say something?
Speech.
Okay, I was going to say thank you. I was just reflecting on this. Thirty-eight years ago, I sat in this very room with four elementary school principals. You might remember Doug McComby, Robbie Robinson, Ruth Anderson, Bob Addy, with Superintendent Norm Gaines, fifth from the left, and Ron Wolf, our HR director, and Doug Moore, Randy Royer, Jeff Frazier, band staff from nineteen eighty-eight. We had a really novel idea to hire one person to teach elementary band at all four elementaries, and that was me. I was two years out of college, and I just, I have loved my time here and I appreciate the opportunities as I look along here. I taught all Janice's kids, I taught all Danny Welling's kids, I taught all your kids, all your kids. I think I have your grandson.
Great-grandson.
Great-grandson, Mr. Andwin, right? This year, taught all those more kids. And as I look around, I just, you know, see friends and people who've just been part of my time here. I came here, I was young, I had hopes and dreams like everybody when they're young. And I was able to live my hopes and dreams here in Evanston, Wyoming. I, I met my husband here, we raised our family here, both Evanston High School graduates and gone on to finish college. And I just am overcome with gratitude that I've got to do the thing I wanted to do most in my life for such a long time. So I appreciate your support. I appreciate this district always nurturing the whole child and really finding the importance in offering musical training, theater training, all just well-rounded individuals coming out of our schools for such a very long time and just grateful to have been here and appreciate Mrs. Moore's kind words and the opportunity to represent our district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pretty awesome. Okay, we will now move on to our school reports.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, this is part of the thing we do every year is invite our principals to come up and review with you their building-level plans as part of our strategic plan, which is district-wide. So first, we'll start with, I guess you're going first, right, Rick?
Yeah, I'm here.
Davis Middle School.
So when I pass out, Andra is going to take over for me. No, I want to introduce Andra. She's our dean of students, and she does double duty, she works at both schools, and so we depend on her a lot. She's a big part of this. So as I start this, I want you to realize that what each one of these slides represents is a committee at our school. So every single person in the building is part of one of these committees, and they are all part of what this plan is. So I want to start with accountability and achievement. So last year, if you remember, Davis Middle School was on, was partially met for the accountability with YTOP and everything. When we came back this year, we were meeting. So that's a good thing. We've improved. So now we're going to continue to improve. So what you see up here in these graphs, we've started using the STAR test as a measure of where we're at with our kids. At this point, we did one right at the beginning of the year, we did one at the beginning of second quarter, and we're going to take a third one as soon as we get back from Christmas break in January, that'll tell us where we're at. Now, so if you look in there, the light blue is English Language Arts, the dark blue is math, and the red line at the top is our goal.
For proficient and advanced.
For proficient and advanced. So you know, this is the kids that are proficient and advanced. Now, the state accountability also goes into growth and our equity kids and all of that. So this is just the proficient and advanced there. So I wanted to show you that. And then we have our HR group, which is really about maintaining our level in high-reliability schools. schools. And our goal was this year, if you look at those two goals, to develop and implement consistent systems to monitor what we're doing in the classroom. So, I go around, we do surveys, we do those kind of things, and just analyze what is working well in the classroom and what is not. The other thing is, in our professional development, we've tried to put in opportunities for teachers to learn new strategies and those kind of things throughout the year. So, we're continuing to monitor teachers and find out what it is that they want to learn, and then we're providing that for them. We're also bringing in some really high-level outside help. Now, my mind went, Mario Acosta? Say it right? You guys all make me nervous, so, sorry. Anyway, he came in, spent a day with us, really great stuff. We got a couple others come in. We got Shelley Geese, who is helping us with vocabulary, which helps us define what are the specific vocabulary that we need at, in each content. So, instead of having 280 words, which one group actually had, that they were trying to teach a kid, it narrows it down to the ones that are really important for whatever content we're working on, so that they can have those as they move from one grade to the other. Okay, next.
All right, so RTI is our Response to Intervention, and we are fortunate enough to have built a win time, what I need time, or an intervention time during the school day. So, we use that to target students and their individual needs, work on skills they're missing, as well as current standards they're doing in the classroom. We also use the STAR data to identify our most critical needs in reading and math, and then we have an extra intervention class in both those areas in all three grade levels to provide extra support that way.
Back to me. So, attendance, one thing we do really well at the school is every single day, we take attendance, our, my secretary, Mrs. Barker, calls every single person's home who is not there that day to find out where they're at, what's going on. That is all recorded into Power School, which helps us monitor the kids that are struggling getting to school and the reasons they're struggling with school. And then, we meet together and we determine which kids need more intervention. We'll make meetings with parents and communicate with them. If necessary, we communicate with the courts as well to make sure that we're getting our kids here when they need to be here. One of the things that we're striving to do with staff is make sure that they're taking that attendance every single day, because sometimes you get busy, you forget. We're doing a much better job at that.
Okay, as far as behaviors go, we are focusing on trying to increase supervision, especially during more unstructured times, like in the cafeteria, in the hallways, where we get a lot of inappropriate behaviors happening. We do a good job of having parents or Mr. Owen I call, talk to parents when there's a concern or a problem, and also try to reward the kids that aren't getting the referrals with demon dollars, rewards, they do some fun activities. They go bowling, go to the rec center, sometimes a movie, things like that. So, try to focus on the behaviors we want to see to reduce the ones we don't. And then, our crisis team, they run a drill every month with a focus on a different scenario or a different response, like a lockdown, shelter-in-place, good-old-fire drills. We try to mix up the times that we do those. We've practiced at lunchtime, during passing times, kind of different times when it's not so easy for kids to know what to do and where to go. So, we're trying to help them just in case, because we can't plan our real crises. So, hopefully, we'll be prepared if and when they occur.
And then, culture. This is a big deal at our school. We've been trying to get everybody to be more like a family. So, our secretary, our secretaries are really great at this, providing activities that occur monthly. This month, they're doing a hot chocolate bar. Doug needs to come over there every once in a while to make sure he gets his. It's usually not hot chocolate, though, is it? Or is it?
Coffee.
Just coffee. Oh, yeah, I can't talk about the other. So, anyway. Anyway, we try to do these kind of things, try to do some different activities instead of just, hey, we're all gonna eat together at lunch or whatever. We try to do different things where we might go to a movie or something that maybe we've never ever tried. So, we're trying to get more input around that and get more people to participate. Davis Middle School is a great place to be. I asked, dropped every one of you a little patch there that you can put on your coat or your wall and remember us, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys don't have any questions for him?
Oh, don't tell them that. Any question? Dave's thinking really hard.
I am, but there's a lot of things going on through this head right now, and I just need to have filters, and them filters need to be adhered to, so.
All right.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, invite Steve Peterson from Aspen Elementary to come forward. Come on down.
All right, good morning, school board and Chair. Mr. Peterson, I'm happy to be here tonight. Principal of Aspen Elementary, named Steve Peterson. I did share some things with you maybe, but I'm gonna show my slides up here as well. So, one of the great things about the landscaping in my house is, like, I can grow the best weeds without even trying, and so, what that gives me every summer is to pick those things and think about what, what I want to use to kind of motivate or drive what we're doing at our school, to come up with a theme. And so, I was listening to a podcast while I was picking weeds, and this is what I heard, and I'm like, oh, this is perfect for our school. It's titled, "Am I a Builder or a Wrecker?" "I watched them tearing a building down, a gang of men in a busy town. With a ho-heave-ho and a lusty yell, they swung a beam and a sidewall fell. I asked the four men, 'Are these men skilled? The men you'd hire if you had to build?' He gave me a laugh and said, 'No, indeed. Just common labor is all I need. I can easily wreck in a day or two what builders have taken a year to do.' And I thought to myself, as I went my way, which of these two roles have I tried to play? Am I a builder who works with care, measuring life by the rule and square? Am I shaping my deeds by a well-made plan, patiently doing the best I can? Or am I a wrecker who walks the town, content with the labor of tearing down?" I've made, so we added this to our, at Aspen. "I've made my decision, I'll start today, I'll be a builder in every way." So, this is really the theme that we have at our school this year, to really build each other up in every way that we can, academically, socially, just as colleagues at a school as well. So, again, our theme is to be a builder today and every day. So, Aspen students were given the opportunity to memorize this poem and pass it off for the Aspen office staff. So, we had quite a few kids do that, and it's really cute. Like, the first day after we did it, like, four kids showed up right early in the morning, even before they went out to recess, ready to show off how they could pass off our theme for this year. So, some of our goals that we have at our school, the first, for accountability and achievement, we will meet or exceed all state accountability indicators from the WDE accountability system. So, those things are growth. All students need to grow at a certain expectancy. Equity is our very lowest achieving students. We need to make sure that they are growing as well, we're scored on that. Achievement is overall number of, percentage of kids who are proficient at school on the YTOP test. And then, the ELP is our English Language Learners. So, the students we have at our school whose first language is something other than English, they need to be scoring at a certain percentage as well, and I'll review how we did last year on one of the next slides. For grades third through fifth, we will have at least 60% of our kids proficient or advanced in reading, writing, science, and math according to spring YTOP. Our stretch goal is 80%. That's what we would love to get. Our realistic goal is 60%. Grades K through 2 will have at least 60%. Our stretch goal is 80% of our students at benchmark in reading according to the spring M-class assessment. Grades K through 5 will have at least 65% of our students at or above the average growth as measured by the M-class composite growth score. And the last one is grades first through fifth will have at least 8% of our students proficient on the district ELA math and benchmark assessments. So, those assessments are the ones that we do as a school district, and in fact, just Monday, we got together as a school district, I led the group of second-grade teachers. So, we go through the results of that test that we took, the district assessment, and the second-grade teachers from each school kind of highlighted some of the things that they had been doing to get the results that they had. That way, we can learn from each other and make plans for improved, improvement for the next time that we take the next test. An instructional goal is by spring 2026, Aspen Elementary will maintain levels, HRS levels 1 through 4 certification. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then, attendance, all students will be in attendance unless they have symptoms of sickness. Behavior, we will continue working on our Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 supports within the PBS framework, and we will continue to use the Swiss data system collection to help us adjust our efforts and our focus there. So, these are the, the, sorry, the YTOP results. Well, I'll start with M-class results from last year. So, M-class is basically our reading, our main reading test that we give for all kids. So, the results came out this way last year. In kindergarten, we had 63% of our kids were at benchmark, first grade, 65% were at benchmark, second grade, 75%, third grade, 75%, fourth grade, 57%, and fifth grade, 67%. The interesting thing is, on every assessment, so, like, for example, fourth grade, they're 57%, however, when they took the YTOP test, they had really great scores. And so, they don't always, like, jive with each other, the different tests that we take. So, that's why it's really good for us to look at all of the assessments, including the assessments that we give kids, like, weekly, as well as just the simple exit tickets they take every single day. And then, 24, 25, for M-class again, these are the percentage of students who met or exceeded the average growth. Kindergarten, we had 68% of our kids did, first grade, 74%, second grade, 85%, third grade, 68%, fourth grade, 63%, and fifth grade, 59%. These are some of the YTOP highlights, and so, the state accountability measures come from only the YTOP test. So, these are just some of the great things we did. So, third grade math, 70% of our kids were proficient or advanced in math. The state average is 58%, just to give you kind of a measuring stick. Fourth grade science, 60% of our kids were proficient or advanced. The state average is 52%. Fourth grade math, 63% were proficient or advanced. State average was 57%. Fifth grade ELA, 63% of our students were either proficient or advanced there, and the state average was 58%. So, the overall performance report that we have is for achieve, overall, our performance, we met expectations, and the indicator for achievement, we met that target. When you're looking at the federal assessment, the ESSA score, we were above average there. For the growth indicator, we met the target there as well. For the federal average, federal, we were, we average, we were average on the federal score. Equity, again, those are the, our lowest achieving kids. We met the target for the state, but we were above the target for the federal expectations. And the English Language Learners, we met the target there as well, and we were average as it came out with the federal scoring. So, HRS levels, high-reliability schools, I had the opportunity to talk with Rotary today to kind of talk about high-reliability schools and what that is, and I talked about, you know, high-reliability organizations are things like the power grid or like a nuclear, like where Bart Simpson's dad works at, you know, the nuclear.
No, I don't know.
The nuclear plant.
Never seen it, I know.
So, anyway, things where you can't afford to make mistakes because you make mistakes and those kind of things, or being like an air traffic controller, those kind of things, they are high-reliability organizations that can't afford to fail. And as a district, as me, as teachers in our school, we can't afford to fail with these kids, so that's what high reliability is all about. So, the first level is safe, supportive, and collaborative. We received that, we, in 2019. HRS Level 2 is effective teaching in every classroom. We received that in 2022. High-reliability schools, number three, is the guaranteed and viable curriculum. We received that in 2023. And then, 2024, the standards reference reporting. So, as you all can, first of all, it was extremely difficult, challenging, and a really great thing for us to do to earn all of these designations, but sometimes even harder than initially getting them is really being able to maintain your school as a high-reliability school in all of these. And so, every year, we are focusing on a different, well, for this year at least, we are focusing on a different HRS level each month, putting forth work, gathering the evidence to ensure that we are maintaining the standards and expectations of each level. So, really, that's a lot of the work that we do on our Early Start Mondays, is, you know, we make sure at the start of every month, we review what, like, HRS Level 1 is, what are the indicators we need to be meeting? We discuss what we're going to do to show evidence that we are continuing with those things, and then, at the end of the month, we show all the evidence, and then, the next month, we get a jump to the next one. So, it's ongoing efforts, and again, this is for, we started this for accreditation efforts as well as school improvement plans. So, we continue to work on being a high-reliability school at Aspen Elementary. One of the fun things we have coming up is for professional development, is we are, a whole bunch of us are going to a conference in Las Vegas called Get Your Teach On. We went to this last year, and this is what they say about it. "Presenters share their passion and enthusiasm for education and give their tips, tricks, best practices, and teacher secrets to building a successful, engaging, and rigorous classroom. You will leave feeling empowered, motivated, and prepared to create dynamic lessons that will challenge your students and leave them hungry for more." So, we did, we went to this last year, and it was so good. Our teachers are still, like, excited about the things that they learned from there. Those of you who have been to different trainings and conferences like this, you don't always get a ton out of them, but this one, they have really dialed in to, like, teachers. So, there is, like, all first-grade teachers, they go to, like, their first-grade stuff every single day, and they get really encouraged about, okay, what are we gonna do to teach reading better, what are we gonna do to teach math better and writing, and it's just a super fun, eh, fun. And it's just a super fun, eh, fun concert. And they have, like concluding, they have a band or like kind of a concert for teachers. And I think they give them a pretty good deal on that just because they know it's teachers who are coming. And so like the band members really like say cruel things to all the teachers, like, hey, we're so excited to perform for you guys. And so they have like the Jonas Brothers a couple of years ago. They had 98 Degrees last year. So I don't know if any of you guys know that. Maybe Caleb knows 98 Degrees. So that was really fun and good. And then I'm trying to think of the people they have this year, but anyway, it's just really like building up teachers and it's super, super fun. And so it's really inspiring. It's reasonably priced, like plane tickets to go to Las Vegas are pretty reasonable from here. And then one of the best things about it is over Martin Luther King Weekend, so there's no sub plans. So that is, when I saw that, I was like, all in. Because one thing, it seems like we use subs enough without like leaving on purpose from our school. And so anyway, so we're excited about that. And that's going to be the Martin Luther King Weekend. All right, some of the things we do, family involvement, we do donuts with dads. This year, we had the high school football team come to sit with the students who, whose parents could not make it, which is really cool. Because we know this, the students who are getting off the bus to come to school on that day where there's donuts for dads, their dad isn't with them, right? Unless he's the bus driver, but I don't think, that's typically not the case. So that was super fun and really a great experience. We do the potato harvest, second grade, they go and plant the potatoes. And then when they come back in third grade, they go and harvest them. We have the Aspen Career Day where community members present their professions to the students, which is a super fun day that we look forward to every single year. Some other things, we have the, the Halloween Math Spooktacular. So families, join us in the evening for math-related Halloween fun. We do a lot of fun math things and that's a really great thing. We also know, you know, we get money from Title I to have events, to have parents try to come. And we know that if we feed them, have games, like they'll come. If we would have said like, okay, come and check out what we're doing around Math Standard 3.7, and then send that home and expect people to come to that, we now know where you would come. But the fun things that we do, we get really good turnout. The thing that's going on right now, we're sledding into Christmas with reading. And so it's just a school-wide reading challenge to track the minutes that students are reading. The first little prize they get is a caramel covered like sucker. And then they get like a big candy. The next thing they, they get to pick a book. And then the ultimate prize is a T-shirt. So we're hoping to get a lot of kids reading with that. And we've given away tons of books and tons of fun prizes. And it's really encouraging kids to do the fun reading. Muffins for moms will be coming up. And last year, and we'll invite them again, we had the high school girls' basketball team. Again, they meet the kids who are coming off the bus and whose parents didn't bring them and come on in and have a muffin with those kids. And so that's been a really good thing. So with that, I give credit to Desiree Bat. She is really the one who like spearheaded that, got that going. We did that last year and it was super successful. So we're gonna, going to continue this year as well, as we already did with the football team. So music, the K-1 concert is going to be in May. We had our veterans concert in November. That was our second and third grade kids. And I thought that was really great. I know Veterans Days, a few days, we did it like on the Friday of the Veterans Week because there's so many other veterans things going on. But we wanted to do one as well. So we did ours on, on that Friday. The kids really dedicated to all the, the veterans that were in the building. And that means a lot to me. Like one of the things, I have my desk and then above it is like my grandpa's called the Purple Heart. And I was just like really impressed with, with the kids. I think they sound, sounded better, they sang louder, and it was really a cool thing. Then our Christmas concert is this Friday. You all are invited to attend that. That should be really fun. Some of the things that we do with music at our, our school. For kindergarten, we do unpitched percussion instruments. First grade, we do unpitched percussion instruments as well. Second grade, mallet instruments. Third grade, mallet instruments. Fourth grade, we get them going on the recorders. And then fifth grade, ukulele. So they kind of build up that way. Science, these are some of the things that we do kindergarten and first. Interdependent relationships and ecosystems, weather and climate. Second grade, structure and properties of matter, earth systems, and engineering design. Third grade, interdependent relationships and ecosystems, inheritance, and variation of traits. Fourth grade, our main focus is on energy, waves, earth systems, asking questions and developing and using models. Fifth grade, properties of matter, matter and energy in organisms and ecosystems, chemical reactions, critical thinking, and problem solving. So as you can see, that's pretty impressive lineup for kids for science instruction from year, from one year to the next. For PE, we work on physical fitness, team building, teamwork, throwing, catching, football, jump rope, soccer, volleyball, cross-country skiing. We haven't been able to do that yet. So we need some kind of a snow dance from somebody to get that started.
That's not gonna happen.
You're not gonna give a snow dance? Or we're not gonna get snow? And then we work on as well in PE, social and emotional skills, good sportsmanship, and conflict resolution. One thing we do to recognize students is we have Aspen Students of the Month. This year for September, the Builder in the Class Award was given to one kid from each classroom. The student helps, supports, and builds others up by kind and encouraging words and actions. October, we did Kind Friend in Class Award. This student is nice to everybody. November, the Never Give Up Award. This student doesn't let hard work, hard learning, and struggle get in their way of working through hard things. December, Responsible Student Award, that's what we're working on right now. The student dresses for success. The big five for the cold weather and snow. Coat, hat, gloves, snow pants, and snow boots. January is the Math Fact Master Award. So this student works hard and, and leads their class in mastering all their grade level math facts. February is Amazing Attitude Award. This student always looks on the bright side and stays positive no matter what. March, we're focused on Most Achieved Reading Rockstar Award. This student reads a lot every day and has shown amazing progress. Then in April, we'll finish out with the Great Example Award. This student is a terrific example at recess and hallway in every classroom. We really focus on a positive culture at our school. We give weekly belt winner shout-outs. So teachers, we even have the governor here wearing a belt once. You know, Superintendent Thomas has done that before. So every Monday, we nominate people in our school for just doing really great things. We nominate all different staff members. And that's a really fun, good thing to recognize greatness in our school. We have a compliment jar. We do different staff challenges at our school just to keep things lively and happy and people excited to come to work every day. So the last couple of things I'm going to talk about is we have, at our school, we have the A-Wing, which is kindergarten, first, and second grade. And then we have B-Wing, which is third, fourth, and fifth grade. And I met with those grade level teams, asked them one, you know, what are they proud of? And then the next thing is, what are they excited about? So kindergarten, they talk about, they're proud that their students are doing great with their foundational literacy skills. Students are getting tons of repetition using engaging activities. First grade team talked about, just as a team, they're willing to do whatever it takes to collaborate and help others, help each other guide all first graders to success. Our second grade team, they're proud of their strong youth life, which is reading instruction for kids and consistent annual growth from one year to the next. Things that they are excited about. So kindergarten, they're excited about very collaborative team. They talked about Rochelle Saxton is an amazing new addition to their kindergarten team. First grade, having a new member, Michelle Lichtenberg is a new first grade teacher at her school. And she provides lots of new ideas and amazing teamwork. Second grade, they're excited about their student success in regrouping, using the algorithm as this is a brand-new skill. So yeah, kids don't just show up in second grade knowing how to carry or borrow, those kinds of things. And so it's really fun, like for the teachers of second grade to really move the kids on to the next level of math. So B-Wing, again, this is our third through fifth grade. The things that they're proud of, third grade, they're proud of how our team works together and problem solves. Fourth grade, students are doing awesome with multiplication and division. Shout-out to Mr. Downs, our new fourth grade teacher. And I think, I think Board Chair Peterson, if you're the last person standing in the audience, you get like a $20 bill from, from you perhaps?
Just, it just keeps getting greater today. So I appreciate that.
It might be more.
No, that, yeah. Last person standing, most definitely $20 from a Peterson.
Okay. So anyway, Mr. Downs, happy to have him here. He's done a really great job. It's nice to have another guy in the school and the kids love him and he does a super great job. Fifth grade, they're proud of their teamwork that they have together. So the things that they are excited about, third grade team is excited to see how high their kids can go. They feel like the students came into third grade like really high and they're just excited to see how far that they can push them. Fourth grade, they are excited about starting fraction unit coming up. So fifth grade, they're excited about how the, about the growth students have made so far. So I thought, for me, this was fun to kind of just check in with them and to really share with you all just kind of the minds of teachers and what they get excited about, what they look forward to doing. So please join with us and join us in what we're focused on this year, be a builder today and every day. And I think that's all I have. Thank you. Is there any questions, comments?
Great job. I love your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
I expect to see you out there with a hammer.
No, not a hammer.
Tearing down or building up?
You gotta build something.
Hey, so before I sit down, during Halloween, we all did dress up as builders.
That's cool.
All right, thank you. We will now move on to our discussion items. Mr. Thomas?
I'm gonna stand up for this one. Chairman Peterson, members of the board, I did attend Wyoming School Board and it was a very good conference, good attendance from statewide. Mr. Wheeler did not attend with me unfortunately, but best part of the conference was Mr. Wheeler was recognized. So if it's okay, since he wasn't there, I'd like to recognize him today. So this is a letter of nomination that he received. It is my honor to nominate Mr. Dan Wheeler for recognition as an all Wyoming School Board member. Dan has been a trustee for Uuna County School District Number One Governing Board since 2020. And during that time, he has proven himself to be a dedicated advocate for students, educators, and the Evanston community. In his role as trustee, Dan represents Uuna County School District Number One by serving on the Uuna BOCES Board, Region Five BOCES Board, and the Evanston Recreation Board. Beyond his school board responsibility, he continues to strengthen community connections by serving on the Evanston Lodging Tax Board and the Wyoming Community Development, Development Foundation. And he also serves as chairman of, I believe, our Hall of Fame Committee. Additionally, Dan has extended his service statewide as Uuna County's representative on the Wyoming School Board Association Board of Directors. These roles reflect his deep commitment to public service and his ability to work collaboratively for the benefit of students across Wyoming. Dan has also provided steady leadership on critical and sometimes challenging board decisions. He has been actively involved in shaping policies on issues such as employee concealed carry, student cell phone use, and UCSD Number One's participation in the WEA lawsuit. He supported the construction of two new domes at Evanston High School, championing the renovation of the football, soccer, and track complex, and worked to ensure competitive salaries for both certified and support staff. These efforts highlight his balanced vision, keeping student safety, well-being, and opportunities at the forefront while also supporting staff and facilities that strengthen the district. He is also a consistent and engaged participant in board development training, demonstrating his commitment to personal growth as a leader and to the highest standards of school board governance. Dan is a proud product of Wyoming schools. So graduate of Evanston, ooh, went a little far. Graduate of Evanston High School and the University of Wyoming. He has remained a lifelong supporter of Red Devil activities and a champion for student success. His roots in Evanston, combined with his statewide leadership, make him uniquely qualified for his disrecognition. Equally important are Dan's personal qualities. He and his wife have been married for 50 years and together they have raised three children and enjoy six grandchildren. This strong family foundation has shaped Dan's perspective as a leader who always puts students first. His energy is infectious, his vision is forward-thinking, and his commitment to Wyoming education is unwavering. Dan is widely regarded as a champion for educators, a timeless supporter of youth, and recognized leader in the Evanston community. Dan Wheeler exceeds every criteria for selection as an all Wyoming School Board member. His service, record, leadership, and passion for education make him an outstanding candidate for this honor. I'm confident that his continued efforts will leave a lasting impact on students and educators, not only in Uuna County, but across the entire state of Wyoming. It is with the highest regard and great enthusiasm that I submit this nomination for Mr. Dan Wheeler. So he was selected as a member of the All Wyoming School Board. So congratulations, Mr. Wheeler. Thank you. It was, was kind of interesting because they did not have his All Wyoming plaque. And we still haven't received it. But Dan was also recognized as Award of Distinction Level Two. That is for attendance at state workshops, his, the board membership, I forgot what we call that. But Dan is now at level two and so he was recognized for that too. So I'm gonna give him this plaque as if it's also the all school board's plaque.
Oh, there you go.
I don't know if there's anyone to take a picture, but relax. Come on over.
Come on down. You're the next contestant. The prize is right.
Thank you. Congratulations. Yes, thank you very much. All right, three, two, one. Thank you. That is all I had about that.
So I just want to say thank you for just encumbering, not encumbering, but including everything that we know about Dan in that letter that you wrote, you know, that I think you summed him up very well.
Yes, thank you.
I just have one, one comment. And I apologize to the board for not being able to attend the event in Casper. My wife has some health issues and I just was not able to leave her alone. But just, thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now move on to discussion item B.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, the official newspaper will be the Herald. And so you will approve that as such at the next board meeting. This is always a heads up for that.
And that'll come through January approval.
Yep.
All right, next discussion item, depositories for District Funds.
I'm gonna have Mr. Williams come up and answer your questions if you have it. Same thing as we identify those district funds, there's also a, we have a conflict of interest statement in there. And those will be approved in January. Or is that, what's that? Yeah, you all need to sign that, by the way. Don't go anywhere, David.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the conflict of interest does not necessarily mean that you have a deposit in a given bank, but that are you on the board of the bank or have a controlling interest in that? Any questions?
We will now move on to next discussion item, draft audit.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, usually this, at this time, we present the audit, at least by this time in December. However, the compliance supplement, which directs the auditors on to what gets audited for the special revenue funds, did not come out until about a week and a half ago. Consequently, the state has asked that we present a draft audit to you, and I have sent a PDF of that through Sheri to put on the, whatever the equivalent of the board docs, whatever we're calling it now, simply, on that. The auditors say that they will have a completed audit by the next board meeting. However, let me kind of quickly, quickly go through, if you're wanting to get a quick overview of the year, the audit, I have a little essay called the Management's Discussion Analysis. Gives you, you know, kind of, it gives you a quick overview. The other pages that you would, that I would say, hey, highlight, beginning with page about four, you have two presentations. One is if it's a business, the other is if it's a government. And you have a statement of net position, which is basically a snapshot. If you want to take a quick, you know, how is the district doing at the end of the year, this is what it looks like. You also have, and the balance sheet, both of those show, here's what they're doing. That gives you the fund balance total. And then the other one is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in net, changes in fund balance or net position. Those tell you what happened during the year. So there's two of those, one as if it's a business, one as if it's a government. So that's all I'm going to say on that. Do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
All right.
Anybody?
Nope.
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 Okay.
On to the next one.
On to the next one. Recalibration update.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, to kind of give you a quick update on what's happening in recalibration, I believe we talked to you about, there was the October recalibration meeting in which there was direction given by the, by members of the recalibration committee on what would they like to see in terms of legislation. So they're asking the Legislative Services Office to start writing draft legislation. I went to the School Boards Association meeting, and there was a day in which we spent all the business managers, and we have a model that we think models what the legislation's going to be. And the, there's, I guess, two good news and one bad news. The first good news is this, at least I think it is, and that is that going back in times in terms of recalibration, they have never taken the recommendation of the consultants. So most likely, whatever recommendations that the consultants have given are going to be modified, disregarded, or pushed to the side for some reason, okay, if we follow trend. Okay, the second good news is that the legislature has in their recalibration quite a bit, and I mean by quite a bit, there could be up to $4 million in added money, and I have that in air quotes, for Uuna One for the general fund. Now, here's what the bad news is, is that they have taken that $4 million, which can be salary enhancements and things, and they've coupled it at the same time with $4 million of bad things. So what I mean by that is they've made class size adjustments, and they want to move class size from about 16 and 21 to one regular general fund teacher to 15K3 and 25 for 4 through 12. And so that's a big, big lift to make that change across. In essence, what I'm seeing is that the legislature is saying, hey, we're going to provide you money, but you've got to basically do it on the backs of those who, you know, on the changes that we want you to have. So in essence, what I see is it's a, it's a little bit of shuffling of funds as opposed to adding any new money. So the caution that I'm kind of giving right now is that it wasn't, there's no really good path forward if they implement everything. We are asking you, as members of the board, to join with us, where I think Ryan and I have got, we're going to try to meet with our legislators and offer them information about the impact of some of the proposed ideas that they're asking. You know, some of the, some of the ideas are things like, hey, we're going to take all of your interest income that you invest, and we'll count that. So we, as a district, have been using that to augment different programs and things. Some of the things that they've asked is, or they want to do, is they want to cut the student activity amount that they're putting in to that. So to give you kind of some numbers, we have about, this last year paid about $1.5 million for all of the student activity costs. We were funded about $263,000, okay? So there's an amount that the state, we kind of have to find money in different spots to put that there. They're wanting to take and cut it to $980,000 or something close to that, which, okay, it's supposed to be cost-based and, you know, kind of go with that. There's a change in the three-year rolling average. They're saying, let's just do away with the three-year rolling average. Whatever your ADM is of the previous year, that's it, and that kind of flows through. So you add up, you know, the, all of the bads are offset, they offset all of the goods and things. So the month of January will give us opportunity to, there is one more recalibration meeting, but we will also have the opportunity, hopefully, to meet with our legislature and say, here's what this means. Then in February, beginning around February 1st, they will be meeting for a budget session, which will last roughly a month and things. As well, the, and I think we updated you that the court decision that was made by the district court judge has been given a stay, which means basically that's put on hold. Then we've also got the Supreme Court decision, and we're not expecting that until after the legislative season. And it could be, it could be as early as August or April, but it could be as late as whenever. There's a few things on the Supreme Court docket. So it's really not good news, inasmuch as I try to say, hey, you know, there's some money there, but it's money with, that requires some cuts or changes or things like that. So do you have any questions?
When were you going to try and meet with the legislators?
It will be in January, most likely.
Probably that second week of January.
Second week, second week of January. The third week of January, there is a last recalibration meeting that will be in Cheyenne as opposed to Casper, where all the other ones have been held. And at that time, we will get the unveiling of whatever they've written. And so we've been able to cost out those, the proposals, the direction that they gave to LSO, but we'll see if that, you know, kind of what happens with that. So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, that concludes our discussion items. We will now move on to public comments, if there are any public comments. Crickets. Okay, no public comments at this time. We will now move on to our action items.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, we do have one notice of a retirement that recommend that you take action on, D, for the end of this school year. We recommend that you approve that notice.
Denied.
Denied.
I need a motion to approve the retirement and resignation as discussed in executive session.
Hesitantly moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? With a heavy heart.
Yeah.
All of them, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries.
Do you want me to record it that way?
Yes.
Yeah, why not?
We can record it that way.
Since we go back forever.
Okay. It doesn't feel fitting, Dave, to move on without saying thank you.
Very much so.
That's more me thanking you. It's been an unbelievable opportunity, and like I said, it's been a lifetime for me, and this is my, my life, this district, so hope moving forward it'll continue to go as well as it has in the past, so, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We may need to go on to action item number B. We need to approve the board meeting schedule for 2026 to 2027.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the board meeting schedule for 2026 and 27.
Aye.
Second, sorry.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. We will now move on to action item C. We need to approve the property insurance renewal. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you should have received a memo and, from me, and another one from Tagler on the property insurance. Now, it has moved up from $367,000 to $413,000. I kind of felt like it was going to do that, and we put money in, into the, into those accounts, so we're covered on that. Some of that will, basically, $13,000 will be reimbursed by the state, which has the concealed carry amount, not the active shooter, but the concealed carry. The, and I think that this will cover us. We did try to get a second bid from Liberty Insurance, but they had an issue with the domes, and they said, they didn't like the, you know, when the domes, when a dome fails, they felt that the whole thing goes down, and so, okay, whatever. And so we did get from Wright Insurance on that. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Thank you.
Just have you pay it.
So I need a motion to approve the property insurance renewal.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the property insurance renewal.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second, they have motion.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. We will now move on to action item number D, approve student disciplinary actions as discussed in executive session.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, I'll second. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. So I've never done this before, but do I need to say what I need to say now?
Yeah. Chairman Peterson, what I recommend is that you guys do the board roundtable, and then you'll have to modify the agenda to add an executive session with no business after the, no business?
Yeah.
No business. No further business after the executive session. We'll adjourn from there.
Adjourn from the executive session?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess that's what I'm asking?
Yes.
Okay. So we will now go into our board roundtable, and I will start out. We are going to post the position for the superintendent of Uuna County School District Number One. We will open it internally, we will have it open for 30 days. All applications need to be done by January 9th of 2026. And after we review those applications, we will review them on the 10th, no, the 13th. And so anybody that is interested, that qualifies for that position, we will have the posting of the position by tomorrow?
Probably by Friday.
By Friday, and those who are interested can apply. So we are looking internally first. Any other discussions on the roundtable at all?
I have one.
I've got one, too. Go ahead.
You go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'd just like to take this opportunity, I'd be remiss not to talk about Mr. Thomas and I. I mean, I say that personally because we both came to the district about the same time. He was a science teacher, I was the assistant principal at the high school, and I'm not sure if I'd tell this one or not, but I remember coming in his classroom more than once, and he pulled me over one time, he says, "Mr. Bennett, you're terrifying the kids." I said, "How's that?" He says, "You've got the biggest arms I've ever seen." And I just thought to myself, you know, this man is aware of things that are going on, and he was so good with kids. But we moved from there to him end up being the principal, and I was assistant principal for four years, and I always came away from the meetings we had with guidance of where we wanted to go. I think Ryan and I worked together, together most positively. And we went through the years when, you guys don't know, maybe you do, but we went through the years where we had high school graduation, and they were a zoo, and we turned that around. And it was a lot of things that I could tell you about Mr. Thomas, but he's a good friend and has been very consistent, and his family, and as they grew up, we got to know each other, but Ryan's just, I didn't, I ran, interesting, I ran into the parking lot the other day, and I think I kind of convinced him it's time to go. I didn't want him to, but kind of gave him some ideas, but anyway, just in closing, Mr. Thomas has given this district his all, and he hasn't always been perfect in doing so, but he's always thought about the teachers and how he could give them a raise and what benefits he could provide, and I really appreciate him as an individual, he's a close friend. I hope he lives as long as his mother. She told me the other day she was 93.
Plays as much golf as she does would be great, too.
Plays as much golf as she does would be great, too.
So he's got a great retirement ahead of him. I'm going to have to show him a few things to do so he can get in trouble with me. Thanks, Ryan.
No, I'd like to say something, too. I've, I've known Ryan for a long time, since he's come into the district, and since being on the board for the past eight years, I got to know Ryan at a completely different level, and I want to reiterate what Mr. Bennett just said. For those who don't know Mr. Thomas, being in there for eight years, he puts you guys first, I'm telling you. Every meeting we were in, every decision he made was for you guys first. And I don't know if people understand that he did this, because there's a lot of people that were upset at different times, but I'm, I'm telling you, his, his heart, his love, his, his passion was Uuna County School District Number One, and I greatly appreciate him for that, for what he has done for this district and the time you have put in here. So thank you again, you're a class act.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yep.
Anything else?
Plaque's in the mail.
Thank you very much.
We can, but, well, we already approved it, though. He had one more year on his contract. We about didn't allow him to go, so, but, but we had to, so, anyway. I need to have a motion to modify the agenda to go into executive session and adjourn from executive session.
Some of.
I have a motion.
Second, that motion.
It was me.
Caleb. Dave was second.
Dave's second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will adjourn from executive session. Thanks, everyone.
I just have one. Sherry?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry.
Thank you very much.